May 12th meeting of the Berlin zoning board of appeals. Please be advised that the meeting is being recorded, so your image or in voice may be recorded. I'll just go around and introduce everybody. This Leeann Leahy, she's our land use boards clerk. Myself Lynn Ryan, Jim Royer, the ZBA vice chair, Danny Bartlett, the ZBA clerk, Pat Jackson, Ginny Zakatinsky, and Suzanne Roberts. I'd just like to open the meeting to say how proud I am of all of you. I think the letter, everyone's read the letter from Mr. Wheeler.
Yes.
I forwarded it to counsel, just to say, and she said it's the first time ever she's been not been the the target of neighbors, that it was nice for a change. So, I don't think you appreciate, I don't know how many boards you've served on, but I know that this is a good group, they really are, and I know you had to make some hard choices last month. So I thank you for that. What was the first thing, minutes?
Yes, minutes of April 14th.
Anyone care to make a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve last month's meeting minutes.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Jim and seconded by Danny. I'll go around for a roll call vote unless someone has some changes. Jim?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Ginny?
Aye.
And Susanna?
Aye.
The minutes have been approved. What's next, Leeann?
Sign warrants.
Which we don't have anything to do, right?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, Danny?
I have nothing.
Okay.
We haven't spent any money yet so far, so we've got to stop buying something and they'll take another couple hundred dollars away.
Is there anything that you need, Leeann?
I'll double check, I might need some envelopes, but that's about it.
Yeah, if you need any postage or any folders or anything like that, please order them and we can approve them next month so that we can get that money in. How much is left in there, Danny?
We got five hundred dollars, there's five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think I need five hundred dollars in office supplies, but I'll check and see what I need.
That's a lot of envelopes.
Yeah.
I mean, if you need a stapler, if you need, you know, anything like that, please.
Yeah, I'll check up. I will check through, I, like I said, I know I need some of the large size envelopes, but I will look, I will see what I need.
Okay, and the next thing was town meeting?
Yep, discuss annual town meeting.
Has everyone looked through their booklet?
Yep.
Town report.
And I sent everybody by email the page that contains the articles pertaining to the zoning bylaws for quicker reference.
And they're all going to be done Monday night, right?
Um, no, Monday, well, Monday night is the wetlands protection bylaw and then the citizens petition. So I think unless they don't get to it, I think the zoning bylaws are supposed to be on Saturday.
Yeah, I'm just wondering how the packing one's gonna go.
What parking one is that? Where am I looking?
Um, this is, I don't know, if you have your booklet handy. It's on page 104, I think.
Oh, okay, I'm only looking at the zoning. Hang on, let me go get my book.
I always thought right along they had a, had a, the right to charge for a
No, they have no parking areas and different stuff, but there's no fines associated with it.
See, okay.
That's just a suggestion only, no parking.
Yeah, it runs three pages.
What's a Reader's Digest version?
Basically, they want a process for posting, charging fines, that sort of thing.
For cars that are parked on private, on roadways?
This is roadway packing, from what I understand.
Like anywhere in town, roadways?
Well, they have, they have a, a winter time parking ban that I guess has no teeth, other than they tell them to move it or they tow it. You have the no parking in front of the general store and in between by the bank and so forth. Then they might have some no parking down there at River Bridge. And there's no way of enforcing it from what I've read into it.
Yeah, it looks like they're just revamping the whole thing because they're even talking about the removal, which I'm assuming is towing.
Correct.
I love the notice to appear and then it, should any person notified to appear here under feel to appear, yada, yada. It's really, you know, there's a lot of technical language. I just don't know how people are going to receive this. I'm just looking to see who put this in, the selectmen?
No, please chief. I'm sorry, who did?
Please chief.
Okay, and on page 107 are the articles that may affect us.
I, can I just say, I can't believe after all the work we did, it still doesn't, it only says resident, it doesn't say owner, resident.
I know, I know. It's, it's better than it was, that's all I can say. But, we all have a right to stand up and make an amendment if we choose.
Yeah, if, I'm working, I can't go.
Right, well, I guess you can submit them in writing too. But, um, or have one of the other folks submit them if you want to make a change.
Is anyone else going to this on Saturday?
Nope.
I'm going on Saturday.
I'll be there.
Are either of you gonna make a motion to amend it?
I hadn't planned on it. What about you, Jim?
Um, I'm not really sure what the that, well, number one, I'm, I'm not really sure, my guess is here, what you're saying is, you're saying it should be the ability to have a home-based business should be restricted only to people who own the property?
Yes, because the problem is that a renter comes in, doesn't know the bylaws, and if he violates it by having a home-based contracting business, the town can only go after the owner of the property. So what was happening over on Oak Street was that the the renter was a subletting to two other landscape contractors, so there were three businesses there. And building inspector could only find the owner of the building. And the owner of the building was saying, I have no idea what's going on over there, you'll have to take me to court. And so, nothing ever came of it. They, there was just no teeth in it, so if you can only go after the owner and it's the renter that's having the issues with the home-based contracting, you can't do anything. And we said this to the planning board, well, at least Lynn did, I was listening. And it just, nothing came of it.
Uh, you seem to be knowledgeable about Oak Street. What happened at Oak Street? Is that the one that we, that he had a home-based contracting business? Is that the one that we gave the expansion of a non-conforming to?
It was before he bought it. Before he bought it, the previous owner rented out the place to somebody who was in Northborough. They were using it as not only a home-based contracting, but also as a contractor yard. And then he sublet it to two more landscapers. They were all using it as contractor yard and parking their vehicles there, and they would start at, you know, 4:30 in the morning with their equipment, loading it up on the trucks, getting deliveries of bark bultch. And so it was Larry Brant at the time, who was the building inspector, and going back and forth with the owner, because he's only allowed to contact the owner. And then the renter was saying, well, I don't know what you're talking about, you know, I, you know, the owner said I could do this. And then the owner was saying, I don't know what you're talking about, I'm only renting it to this one guy. So there was no way to really go after the violations.
I'm just, that wasn't something that I think we brought up before. I'm, I'm just wondering, even if we changed it to, you know, you've got to be a resident, you can't be renting or something along that idea. I don't know that that would have changed anything. Because I don't know that it would be legitimate to find anybody but the owner of the property for allowing it to happen. You know what I mean?
Well, that's why it should say resident and owner of the dwelling.
But even if it does, even if you say that and say I'm renting a, a house here in town and I'm a renter and I open my own business and I don't get a permit, then what difference does it make if only the owner is allowed to have a permit? If, you know, if I don't get it anyway and they're still going to have to find the owner of the property, they can't find me, you're still in the same boat.
That, that's true. If they're just not going to do things properly, there's, this is only going to protect the people who follow the rules, really, most.
But isn't, you know, you, you had the same boat if you, if it's available to a renter, if the renter follows the rules, well, you know, you're in the same boat. So I, I'm not quite sure what you gain by, by putting the, limiting it to owners.
I don't understand why if the building inspector issues a cease and desist order, my understanding is that there are fines in accordance with that. And I would think that were I the building inspector, I'd send them a cease and desist order and then turn around and let the fines build up. I think it's something like three hundred dollars a day.
Yes, it is.
And let, and let the fines build up to the point where it's worth taking them to court.
Yes, and it got to that point on Oak Street and the owner of the property said, I am not operating a home-based business there. I don't, you know, I'm renting it out to someone who is, so.
But they're still responsible for what the tenants are doing.
I'm just saying it didn't work out.
Yeah, yeah.
For whatever reason, it didn't work out.
The way it's written now, it says must be owned and operated by a resident of the dwelling. So if, if a renter is a resident of the dwelling, he's allowed to have a home-based contracting business if he has a special permit?
Well, that, I guess that's the question. Do you want to allow a renter to have a home-based contracting business?
Because as long as they're a resident, the way they're proposing it in Article 27 would be that a resident would be able to the business must be owned and operated by a resident, so that could be a renter.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. And I thought we were trying to tell them, we want it to be only the owner of the building could have the home-based contracting.
I think Glenn had awarded a property owner or blood relative or something similar to that, right Lynn?
Yeah.
Who's a resident, right? In other words, if a husband and wife have a son living there, an adult son, and the adult son is living at the residence and he's a blood relative, obviously, that he could apply for a permit.
Yeah, so the way they're proposing it now, just saying resident, that would leave it open to a renter being able to get a special permit.
Yeah. Maybe this is something we need to take another look at. It also doesn't say there can only be one such business, okay? So if you are renting, for me, I live alone, I got five bedrooms, okay? So if I rent out a couple of bedrooms and somebody's living there, can they apply for a home-based contracting business?
The way it's written, it, they could.
Yep.
Because it just said.
And what if you rent it to two different people and each one has a different home-based contracting business?
Now, the only thing you can hang your hat on is that they don't have a permit. And Amy has said several times, special permits are just that, special permits, it's sort of like your license. It's a privilege, it's not a right to get one. So we could refuse people, rightfully so, from having a permit. So if one came and they got it, we could the other thing is the number of trucks and the size of the lot, you know what I mean? That would all enter into it. But maybe it's something we need to revisit.
Yeah, I just, I just feel like the planning board ignored us entirely.
Yeah, I think they ignored part of it at least, yep. But this is better than what's in there now. And sometimes I think there are people who would have a vested interest in writing it differently.
The, just like the guy that got the special permit on River Road West, he's still packing his equipment there in his yard.
Yeah.
All of his pickup trucks are still lettered, which was, I don't believe he's ever gone to the courthouse and got, had it registered.
Probably not.
Um, how do we feel about the in-law apartments? The total floor area?
I'm fine with it.
Always got to stay in an in-law apartment.
The only thing they, the planning board pretty well took verbatim was the common driveway one. And that would have been a big help to us. Because it puts the ball, ball in the court of the planning board, we don't need to get involved in the common driveways.
It will be interesting to see how that gets applied to, oh, what is?
Brigham and Bailey?
Oh, no, I, yeah, there's that one, but I was also thinking the one we just approved, was it? Caves of Berlin, that's what it's called.
So, how did you forget the name?
Yeah. I must have repressed it, you know?
For the capes, for the capes of Berlin, when does their 20 days run out?
Um, Monday, the 17th, this coming Monday. So he can start on Tuesday and he's supposed to put up a fence first before he does anything, so.
I just, I, I hope the like the earth removal people have a real good person looking at what he puts back in that hole.
Hmm. Yeah, especially because of the water and sewer being so tight over there. I mean, there is a lot of gravel, but it won't permeate through clay.
That's quite a big hole he's got there.
I think the medical marijuana one is a good thing. To know, Leeann, um, how, um, those folks made out that wanted to go over to be in a door?
No, I haven't heard anything further.
There's something written there.
That's pretty silent.
Yeah.
And the church that wanted to build up, off of Soy Hill Road and Route 62.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything further from them either. I think both are dead in the water.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like they're going to be doing anything. I'm quite frankly shocked that we haven't been inundated. Anybody share my feelings? With permit requests.
Yeah.
On, on, on bad locks and trying to put them every which way for Sunday.
Yeah, Ginny, you brought up last month of Lu- Luis, Luis Santos for that corner lot on Coolidge Road and Gates Pond Road. I guess it was before the Board of Selectmen Monday night for earthworks or like kind soil or something, so in, uh, the building commissioner had sent him an email today reminding him of the letter that was sent last August saying that it's not an allowed use, what he wants to do, so.
I don't know. What is this for, Ginny? What is this for?
It's the lot, it's the lot at the corner of Coolidge Road and Gates Pond Road. And the guy bought the lot and asked to, he just wants to park vehicles there. And so Rich told, wrote in a letter to him back last August saying that he wanted to cut down trees, bring in fill and fence the property and then store cars there. So that's probably why he went to, I'm guessing, the select board to bring fill in. But anyways, the, the building commissioner wrote in his letter that the minimum required lot size in the commercial zoning district is 80,000 square feet area and 200 feet of road frontage, and that he didn't have that, so it was a non-conforming lot. And he also told him that his proposal to store cars and trucks within the bylaws is not allowed in that. So he was, he was told a year ago that he would have to come before the ZBA, he would need a special permit, a site plan review for a car dealership, but he can't just park and store cars there. And he would also need a variance because it's a non-conforming lot.
He's cut down all the trees, knocked down the building.
Yeah. And now I think he's looking to buy, you know, the family in town who had the fire right behind there? He's looking to buy that lot as well, that property.
Mm-hmm. You'll have the whole side of the road, still won't be 200 feet.
Yeah, so it's still, and still, it's not, the parking cars and trucks there is not an allowed use.
He's got a garage across the street, so I probably, well, he's going ahead with it anyway, it's it's a big hole in the ground, he's cut down everything.
What garage crashed the street, Pat?
That real nice guy who owns the Atlas Building, Atlas car, but he would be grandfathered in, he's been there forever.
Yeah, they've cut the trees. I thought they went to the Earth Removal Board to, somebody to be able to fill it in.
They did, they sent out a notice, he wants to truck, how many truckloads? I don't know, I got a notice somewhere.
About 100 square yards or something.
It's a big, he's going to need an awful lot of dirt for that. It's like a clip that goes right down to 290 or 495 or whatever.
Yeah, it's actually Old Central Street.
Yeah.
Which the end of, like behind the Shiro.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Oh, wow.
Take the left there and there is the burnt out residence and then the man just takes off downhill. And he's cut all the trees, but wanted to bring material in, I guess to flatten it, as I understood, put in a big garage and maybe sell used cars was, I believe what he said.
By the time he fills that in and stays away from the railroad tracks.
Yeah.
And 495, he's not going to have much of a flat area.
Small garage, yeah.
Doghouse maybe.
It's a lot of dirt though, huh? Don't have to fill that? Huge amount of truckloads that would have to fill that.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, he'd be better off to go down at the easement of the railroad tracks.
Yeah.
Cement walls straight up and then come along by 495.
How much would the second purchase, if he purchases the other land, would that give him enough to be a buildable lot?
No.
No.
I don't think so, no.
The one that burned wasn't big enough.
That was a tiny lot too, yeah.
Right. I think it burned, asked to burn two or three times.
Really? Wow.
If at first you don't succeed.
Keep trying.
Um, when would conservation get involved with them doing that, Phil?
Kind of late now.
Well, I know, um, Chris Keith is putting her hand up, she can probably speak to it. I know Margaret sent out a email, I think it was this morning or yesterday, informing all of different, different boards of what's going on. Lynn, would you like me to promote Chris or at least allow her to speak?
Sure.
You want me to promote her? So we can all see her?
If she's willing, please, please promote her.
All right, I'm moving her up to panelist.
Oh.
Well, there's a picture of her anyways.
All the grandkids have gotten big.
Yeah, I'm dressed, so I guess you could promote me. So, yeah, we did have the earthworks hearing, which, on Monday night, which we did continue because we were trying to figure out what this guy's intentions were. You know, and he wasn't real clear. And when then we did tell him, he needed to touch base with all the different departments and, including ZBA, so he may be back. But he needed to especially talk to conservation and I think Board of Health. And, uh, you know, I don't know if there was like a list of.
Yeah, the building inspector, God and everybody, even the planning board.
Right.
Is that zone commercially, do we know?
I believe it is, isn't it, Leeann?
Um, let me, let me look at it better. Commer- yeah, it's zoned commercial.
Okay, do we la, do we allow car dealerships in a commercial zone, I wonder? Where's my Bible?
Yeah, Richard's letter saying that a dealership is allowed. He originally said his intent was just to park stuff there, so it wasn't going to be a dealership. So Rich says that your proposal to store cars and trucks is not allowed. The bylaw does allow for a new or used dealership with up to 10 cars on the premises, subject to a special permit and site plan review. But for a dealership, not just to store cars, it would have to be a dealership.
But wasn't there a while ago somebody wanting to do something right at the, the, from the Dunkin' Donuts back to Gates Pond Road?
Yeah, they never pursued. They same thing, they got a letter saying it wasn't allowed, what they proposed, and so that person, I don't think he can never bought the property, but.
Okay.
He didn't pursue it, but this Louis Santos is pursuing.
So his property abuts the marijuana place, right?
Um.
No. No, except you, you know where the old Shiro restaurant was?
Yes.
Okay, you go up Gates Pond Road from 62 there and then take a left at the end, the old Central Street.
Yeah.
And it's out there, the last lot on your right, by the old ice factory.
Oh, I don't know that that's commercial.
I, I.
That's what Richard's, Richard's letter says, but.
Oh, it says that it's commercial?
It says in his letter to him, yeah, last year.
Because that's all residences back there. Cause that's all residences back there.
Oh, well, you gotta, you've got the auto body.
Yeah.
And you have that big garage just before the auto body on the same side.
Yeah, but I think those were pre-existing or something, weren't they?
No, just the auto body was pre-existing. The other garage between the auto body and Shiro was popped up.
Oh, okay, it's on that side because you were saying at the corner of Gates Pond, well, technically, that's Old Central Street, right?
Yes, yes.
Or actually at Central Street because isn't that the main thoroughfare going to Hudson, that's Coolidge, right?
Correct.
Which is always confusing. I get so much mail for Old Central Street, it's funny. Anybody have anything else?
There's a lady didn't like the over fifty-five up on Highland Street.
The letter from Mary Porter?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
They don't have a special permit from you, do they?
Uh-uh, never came to us.
Planning board.
Okay.
Is that the gentleman who wanted to put in the assisted living with the dining room with the coin sandwich containers and whatnot?
No.
Same builders, isn't it?
It's the builder who.
The same builder.
He was gonna build over at Worcester Sand and Gravel. The over fifty-five.
And I never rode.
Yeah.
Right.
Isn't it Russo?
No, it's Casa.
Casa Realty.
But wasn't, this was approved years and years ago, wasn't it?
Yeah, but the original owner sold it to Casa.
Oh, like recently?
Wasn't Slade the owner?
Yes.
Yeah, originally.
And he sold it to Casa?
But you gotta remember, you only have so long to exercise any permit you get.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it goes away.
Well, was this written before it goes, I mean, wait a minute, I didn't even know this is true, but when it's sold, is it sold with a special permit or does it automatically end on the sale?
No, the special permit, unless it states otherwise in the permit, goes with the land.
Okay.
That's why when we do, you know, the I get so much verbiage in there because you have to say permit is exclusive to the lot and the current owner and cannot be transferred.
But again, it wasn't us who gave him a special permit. So when he went in there, it was already a pre-designed complex from the planning board, so we had nothing to do with it. So in other words, it's selling your property with pre-approved lots, basically, right?
And I think they remodeled what they were doing because when Chris had it, it, he took all, a lot of the fill came from Island Commons, was trucked up there and they made roads out through the
Okay.
The back forty there and now they're, they're overriding the ledge up there and just trying to smooth it out.
Well, again, that would be up to the enforcement agent. Unfortunately, right?
I would assume so.
It's not the ZBA.
Right, once we issue a permit or if some other board has issued a permit, we really don't get involved unless they come back to us for a review. I mean, it's, you know, it is what it is. So how is everybody enjoying the summer and has everybody been vaccinated?
Vaccinated, yes.
Yeah.
Vaccinated, yes, two times.
I got mine, my, my two weeks is up next, or on Sunday, so.
Congratulations.
Leanne, is there any talk of opening up the town hall to meetings again? Or maybe Chris knows?
No, not that I've heard. I'm kind of, I'm under the assumption we'll continue this way at least through the end of the fiscal year. Chris can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't, I don't see in-person meetings prior to the end of the fiscal year.
I think you might be right, Leanne. I think Margaret and I are gonna talk about it at some point very soon.
I don't see any reason to rush to open it up. I mean, we are doing things via Zoom and stuff at this point. And wouldn't we feel terrible if somebody became ill? And once we open it up, you have to open it up to everybody and we may have a lot of things that we could do that we only have the eight of us, seven members and Leanne and maybe three petitioner representing the petitioner. But you can also have, I mean, we've had them where, you know, we had to go get cheers. So you can't say yes to one and no to another.
Well, and even at this stage, everybody has to stay six feet apart, so how do the eight of us stay six feet apart and still allow for room in the, you know, I don't know where we, how we'd be able to do that. So, yeah, I don't see it changing anytime soon. And Lynn, if you're agreeable, I was just gonna go ahead and book the ZBA's meetings in the Zoom channel for the next fiscal year, just as a placeholder until things change. But just go ahead and book our usual second Wednesday at seven PM. Cause right now, we're only booked to the end of this fiscal year.
Okay. Yeah, that, that would be great. The only exception we usually have is in July. And that's usually for the third week. And we all like the idea of meeting at seven o'clock, do we?
Uh-huh, yes.
Makes it easy for folks that have farm duties, right? Chris, do you have any news for us or anything that you think we would be interested in?
I was just gonna warn you that Mr. Santos might be contacting you. You were talking about opening up, you know, having meetings in public. I can give feedback to Margaret about how you feel about that. You know, I do, I mean, I think it's sort of silly personally to have an in-person meeting, like say with the select board, and we have to sit there and wear masks and be six feet apart. But I, I don't know if I'm, how I, how my, the other board members feel.
Well, you haven't heard of anyone having any problems caused by doing it virtually, right?
No, I think Scott's a little anxious to have an in-person meeting. He hasn't had one since he got on the board.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
But, no, I don't think so. I don't think there's been any problems with any of the meetings that I know of.
I think September would be a decent time. Let's see how the kids being back in school and three feet apart. And how many people get vaccinated between now and then? But, you know, usually during the summer, I mean, I would say September would be the soonest I would see you doing it. That would only be if there's nothing that transpires between now and then that's negative, you know? Jim, you're kinda quiet. You usually have an opinion on this stuff.
Well, from my viewpoint, you know, like tonight, we don't have any hearings, we, there's no reason to meet in person. There might be at some point in the future, it'd be nice to, you know, if we do have an actual hearing, it'd be nice to all be able to sit in the same room again. But as Leanne and I were kind of discussing this a little bit prior to the meeting starting here, but you know, if we don't have a hearing, then there's, the Zoom meeting works fine. I mean, this is pretty easy for each of us to, I mean, you can be down to Cape, Denny's up in New Hampshire, I'm gonna go up to Vermont here in August, so you can kind of log in from anywhere and nobody's, you know, nobody has to miss a meeting. It's easy.
Yeah, I tend to agree with that. Do you have any idea, Chris, what the guidance will be going forward as to, let's say, as is with this meeting, we don't have a hearing going on, okay? Can we still do Zoom?
Um, I have the feeling that 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 might be able to continue. I think we're all kind of waiting to find out. You know, I think people found that it worked better than we thought it would.
I also heard that a lot of boards, committees prefer it in that they, a lot more people are attending their meetings when it's from the convenience of their own home. So there are some boards or committees that expressed an interest in continuing with the zone.
Yeah, I find that with school committee. A lot more parents and so forth will attend meetings because they don't have to hire a sitter for younger children. They can, you know, just log in and mute themselves and listen to everything that's going on.
They can be in their pajamas, they can be eating and having a cup of tea.
Yep.
Who are you kidding? Nobody's drinking tea.
It's just a little label taped to the outside of the mug.
Leanne is Louise.
Yep, Louise is here, you want me to.
Why don't you promote her and just, we can ask her if there's anything she wants us to be aware of?
Alrighty, Louise is joining the panel. You need to unmute yourself, Louise. Let me see if I can do that. There she is.
Yeah.
You're unmuted, there she is.
In video. So that just leaves Janet Lamy in the attendees.
Well, I mean, if she wants to join us, that would be fine. Louise, do you have anything you think we should be aware of?
No, not really. I did have a question though on the River Road. It was mentioned something about River Road, about parking truck, construction trucks and whatever. Is that one hundred River Road?
I believe that's the number.
Right, it's the old Tyler Farm.
Correct.
Okey world, okay, yeah. The Conservation Commission is involved with that because they have pushed Phil into the wetlands, so we're working with them trying to get that fixed. We're working with Highland Ridge also. We've had Pat Garner from Northbrook, who's a wetlands expert, monitoring the program with the construction there. And he says so far that everything is in good shape up there. And Russo Brothers are the ones doing the work, but it's Casa who owns it.
Okay.
Right. And we're working with them on finalizing the conservation restriction.
It's amazing for such a small town, we can be so busy.
And that's true. Yeah, very true.
Well, where, where does Sonny stand on putting his bridge across the, the river that he was supposed to do?
Uh, that's, they haven't brought that up since, you know, when they first started. They have not come back and brought it up.
I thought that was part of the conditions at one time.
It is.
Right, we, yeah, we turned them down, you know, when they brought it up, he said no. You know, they had, they actually brought in plans for a bridge that they would put over there and we said, no, they could not do it. So I don't know if they're gonna come back at some point.
Okay, cause I know at one time he talked with, where I'm planning part-time during the week, we have the bridge that went over the Assabit River at Digital. And they were interested in purchasing it.
Oh, okay. Oh, you don't mean the bridge going on, on the road, on River Road itself?
No, this is something separate, pedestrian bridge.
Right, yeah. No, they haven't mentioned that in a few years.
Okay.
They do wanna have a canoe launch on the river. But that hasn't been completed.
One of the things I'd like us to work on in the future and maybe around now is a good time to look at it. Leanne, do you have an electronic copy of the application instructions for the Board of Appeals?
Mm-hmm, yes.
For net, the next meeting or in between now and the next meeting, could you send it out to everyone? I think there's some things we're gonna need to change in there. One of them is the number of copies and when they have to have electronic copies. We don't have anything in there, I don't believe, about what happens if the petitioner fails to show up. I think we need to have some language in there. But I'm sure there's other things that you folks will see. It's really as much of a policy as it is an application, but it's what gets handed to the individual when they're going to apply. And we need to make sure that we're asking for the right numbers, that we're asking for electronic copies. And that we're giving them basically the rules as to again, it's not in there, but what if they fail to show up? What if they want a continuance? Maybe we need verbiage in there that says, you know, you have to be, before the meeting, submit a written form type thing. But anyway, if you guys would take a look at it and maybe we could start working on that, get some ideas from everybody. Pat, you're still interested in doing the database, right?
She's muted.
Yep, no problem, Lynn.
You wanna maybe think about that for the fall or?
Yeah, the fall, please.
Okay, because I'll go ahead and I don't, Chris is, oh, you get old, you forget names. The one who coordinates the working off your taxes.
Peggy Sardell.
Yeah. Is she still the one to contact?
I think so.
And Pat, maybe you'd even like to do it in conjunction with Ginny or something. I mean, I don't know. It's gonna be.
Whatever, we have, yeah, we'll talk about it all summer and then I'll talk to you two and see what you want and the information's out there anyway.
It's, it's up to the board, but I just want us, when we have permits that expire in five years.
Yeah, and they're about twenty years old now.
The inspector has no way of knowing what's expiring this month.
Yep.
And what's good forever, okay?
Yep.
Or even finding some of the permits.
Yep. They're on the website, yep.
So I don't know if it's a Google Doc or if it's a you know, one of those, what's the database you can use with Windows?
We can just do Excel spreadsheet with whatever.
Yeah, Excel spreadsheet is good too, yeah.
We'll figure something out.
Yeah, you were thinking of Microsoft Access.
Yes, that's the one I was thinking of. Cause you can, you know, use you can report against it. Okay, so we can start that. okay, so we can start that. One other thing, um, is that technically if you're absent from a meeting and it's only one meeting and you, you know, like comply by watching the tape or you do whatever. Um, there's a form you're supposed to fill out and submit to this Board of Selectment. Um, so I'll ask Lee, and you have a copy of that form, right? If she can just send it to you and you can see what it looks like. So if you're gonna vote on um, a petition and you've been absent from just one meeting, then the requirement is, according to Amy, that you fill out a form. And I think, I don't know if I stole it from one of the other towns or something.
It's on the State Ethics Commission website.
How do I know, Jim, that you visit there often?
I do.
I know you do. You're our conscience over in the corner there.
Somebody's gotta be.
I know, I know, somebody's gotta.
Um.
And Leanne, thank you so much for all, from all the board members for all you've done this year. I mean, it's been without you, I think we would have faltered.
Oh, well, thank you.
Well, you keep us on the straight and narrow. She keeps me on the straight and narrow, let me tell you. Uh, which she has to. Um, and your support, you know, makes everything work as well as it does. But again, I was just thrilled at the letter from Mr. Wheeler. Um, when to be that close in the butter and to not, you know, be casting stones at us as I might have done were I in his shoes.
Yeah. Well, it's nice when someone, when you get something positive, people are quick to complain, so it's nice when people take the time to express their appreciation.
Yeah, I hope he understands how much it means. In fact, I was gonna write back to him, but I didn't know whether I should or not because
Well, Peter, Peter's a friend of mine, so um, I told him that it was well received by the board and they were very appreciative.
Oh, good. He's a twin, right?
He is.
That's, this is on the Cape of Berlin? Yeah, cuz I didn't see that yet.
Oh. Send it to you. I thought I forwarded it to everybody.
Read your, read your email, Denny.
What, what's that?
I'm sure Leanne will send it to you again, Denny, so you can read it.
I can.
It, it was nice cuz he's got like two sides of that about him.
Hmm.
Do we, do we have a minute? I wanted to ask Chris um, about River Bridge. Many years ago, when they were first proposing River Bridge, there was talk that they were going to rebrill, rebuild the Br- uh, River Road Bridge, the one that goes over the Brook.
Mm-hmm.
And I know, I, it was a timeline that they were supposed to be doing it, and I don't know what happened, but I also know there was a report I had seen where that bridge is now down to sixty percent of its original capacity and needs to be replaced. Are they talking about doing anything yet, or are they just waiting for a truck to fall in first?
Well, I believe the date by which it should be done is December of 2021. And they most likely, uh, they're asking to relook at the um, the agreement that we, the town has with River Bridge. Um, there is one, I believe, one um, warrant article um, to do with um, just negotiations. Um, which we may be reading a statement um, before before we talk about that warrant article. I think it's Article thirty-eight. Um, there are some things that may need to be changed in the agreement. However, there's a, there are still things like the bridge and um, the um, public safety money, which we're still waiting for them to um, come through with. And um, uh, you know, we have been meeting in a subgroup with the Sennys and, you know, made it clear to them that they have some obligations that they need to fulfill.
Yeah, especially when they're asking for additional um concessions, such as a drive-through.
Yeah.
Um, it, it's just, I mean, those apartments are in, and I know that the school buses generally aren't gonna drive that direction, but there's gonna be school buses that are gonna be going over that more than they were in the past, and I think it's, it's priority should be um, well, prioritized for that.
I did, I did make them aware of that cuz I know I've talked to Lynn about that too. Um, and I did make them aware that they really need to um, consider a, a safe place for buses to pick up and drop off kids. You know, um, so they're aware of that. And um, it'll probably come up again when we have another conversation.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if this is just my point of view or if others share it, but it's always felt like we've been accommodating them year after year with um, forgiving taxes owed or monies owed, and yet they still come back to us asking for additional measures that they want to put in to sort of make it viable for them. But I, I think it's really starting to affect the town's ability to, to function. I mean, if something happens at that bridge or if we're not getting mitigation money, especially this past year, I really think it's putting the burden on the town when it, it, they're supposed to be helping us out for doing them a favor about letting this get built.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm especially concerned about the school bus stop because and you've mentioned too, Jim, there's more kids down there than they're claiming. And the only place that there really is a bus stop is up by the um, daycare center there. And all that is, is a little pull-off. And if you look at it, it's like at the top of a hill and the kids would have to climb over grass to get down to the daycare center. And I don't know where the kids, would you want them all waiting for the bus there? I mean, that could be a pretty dangerous place to be in the winter. I don't know why they didn't make them put up a um, uh, shelter. You know, like for a bus stop.
I thought that was for school kids. I actually thought that was for like the, the metro bus or something, you know, this
Apollo?
Yeah, I never, I never really thought it was for school buses.
Yes. There was a lot of arguing about that back in the time.
Hmm. Yeah, because school buses won't go on private property for insurance reasons.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember that from the Eco Village.
So where are they gonna stop and pick up the kids at River Bridge?
Um, they were talking about Bassett Road. Um, I, I am not really clear which one is Bassett. Is that the one that's right off of the uh, circle that goes nowhere, as Peg calls it?
Yes.
I think, I think so.
And that, that's private property.
Right.
But that Bassett Road goes all the way out and around and enters back again on River Road. So they could certainly put a bus stop at that end and put a building up for them to sit there.
But I think they can only do that after the town accepts it as a public road.
Is that where they want the townhouses? On Bassett Road?
The apartments.
Maybe.
No.
The townhouses would be on either side of Bassett.
On the other side? Both sides.
They would be on either side of Bassett.
Okay, both sides of Bassett, okay.
There's no houses down there. We don't need anymore down there.
Well, they want them.
Do we know, Chris, do you know how, what percentage of the apartments are rented?
I know I did hear that answer and I cannot remember now what, what the answer was. I know it's been asked. Um.
But there's a lot of apartments rented in there.
Yeah, there are.
Rumor had it that they were full.
I don't think so. I don't think they're quite done. I mean, I, I, I think they're done building, but I don't think they've totally rented them all out.
What do folks?
Probably.
What do folks think about the wetland law?
It's long.
Or article, rather.
Yes and no.
Yeah, I have mixed feelings on it. I um, we were discussing this again earlier too, and I, I empathize with the Conservation Commission in that they, they don't have any means of enforcing the rules that they're attempting to enforce. Um, and their, their hands are kind of tied on a lot of that. Um, on the other side of that, um, my understanding is that the, and perhaps Louise can address this a little bit, but um, the few items that have gone up to the state that the Conservation Commission has attempted to enforce previously, uh, they've lost at the state. So I'm a little concerned that if it's no longer going to the state and they're making decisions that the state is overruling them on and now we're giving them the power to find people or do whatever on things that their interpretation may not be correct. So I don't know how that, it plays out in the long run.
Well, Jim, I would equate that to like the Housing Authority and us with FOTB's, okay?
Well, it may be, you know, I, I don't, I don't know. Um, and maybe, maybe Louise can address that.
Louise dropped off. She's not on any longer.
Oh, okay. Like you said, I, I feel pretty good with the current Conservation Commission. I, I don't think, I don't think anybody that's on there is vindictive or out for a power grab or anything, but um,
Not right now, but you don't know who's gonna be on it in the future.
Yeah, this does give them a lot of power and who knows who's gonna be on the Conservation Commission in twenty years? I mean, this, the ordinance isn't gonna just go away once it's in place. So, you know, you're giving them a lot of power. Um, I, John had previously mentioned that, you know, they already have most of these authorities, according to the state. Um, they just haven't had the, the ability to enforce it. So I, you know, I don't, I don't know where the, the actual line there is. I had suggested to John that perhaps outlining what those powers are that they supposedly already have and which ones are new powers um, in his document, but I don't think that ever happened.
Well, let's go down to um, the former spooky world. And when they were throwing all that stuff in back there, including refrigerators, et cetera. Um, don't you think the Conservation Commission should be able to do something in the way of fines?
Perhaps. Um, I don't, I don't know, I'm not really familiar. I, I know there was something going on there. There was a pile of garbage apparently back there by the water area. Um, and I'm not opposed to them being able to find people. Um, but like you said, i- if, if all of the appeals or all of the previous decisions that have gone to the state have gone against them, then I'm kind of concerned about what is their interpretation of the rules versus what is the state's interpretation of the rules? Um, and I don't know, you know, again, i- here we have a, a planning board and we have a uh, the planning board writes the town zoning bylaws, and then we have a Board of Appeals to go to if someone feels that they can't comply with the ordinance. Who do you go to in the case of conservation? They don't have a Conservation Board of Appeals. Um, does that go back to the state again? How does that work?
Well, what, what they're doing in the bylaw is uh, interjecting a mediator.
Right, but they're taking it away from, um, I believe right now it goes to the DEP. And they're saying your choices will be either Superior Court or a mediator. And whereas before, it may not have been it, it's gonna be more expensive for an applicant to appeal than it was before, is the way I read it.
Lynn, Janet Lamie in attendance has her hand up. Do you want me to allow her to speak?
Sure.
Um, I just, Jim just raised a thought in my head, Janet Lamie, 102 Derby Road. Um, you've mentioned that their previous appeals have been lost at the state level. My question, and I hadn't even given this a thought, is um, if an appeal were to um, go again or after this bylaw, would that be, you know, the applicant would certainly be paying for their side of the appeal, but would the town have to pay to mitigate their side? So is this going to be a cost to the town with, with any of these appeals that might be moving forward? I never gave that a thought. My finance committee brain just went into um, hyper alert here.
Yes, it says that, the bylaw says that the cost will be split by the applicant and the plant, and the Conservation Commission.
I guess I didn't realize all their previous appeals were not won. I mean, I knew a few of them and some of them were costly, and I know a few could have been a lot more costly, but we had some very nice residents that just um, you know, did not go that route, which thankful for them, but I, I hadn't even given that that a thought, Jim, and um, that certainly does raise one more question that I have with this, um, with this bylaw. And thank you for pointing that out.
Well, let, let me just say that my understanding is there have not been a whole lot of cases that have gone to the state. Um, my understanding is in the last couple of years, there's only been two, maybe two or three that have, you know, ended up at that level where things couldn't be negotiated locally. Um, so I don't, you know, I don't think there's a whole lot of them. It's not like it's a monthly thing where they're you know, referring things to the state and having the DEP rule on and things. It's a, it's a once in a while happening.
No, but there are two um, additions to the bylaw, speaking of uh, vernal pools and intermittent streams, and I still don't have this down, and I've been to a lot of these meetings, that is not in the state law, it is in our bylaw. So I'm just thinking, you know, if somebody were to, you know, you know, th- those two situations could open up since they're not in the state, the State Wetlands Protection Act, but are now going to be in, in the, the Berlin bylaw. Um, which, you know, that was brought up at a couple of the meetings as well. For food for thought, you know?
Uh, and this is one of the initial concerns that I expressed with this whole thing is on the planning side, you know, you, we know where roads are, we know where lots are, you know, everything has lot lines and there's, there's deaves and whatever that controls the property and everything. If, if you pass a new ordinance, it's very easy to say, this is what existed on such and such a date. So it's all grandfathered in and, you know, the new things a- after that, after the date of the bylaw change are required to comply with the new bylaw. But on the conservation side, like the vernal pools, you have no idea if you have a vernal pool or not until the Conservation Commission tells you you have one, effectively. Um, so you know, you can have somebody who's, you know, had a piece of property for, for thirty, forty years and all of a sudden, you know, somebody shows up and says, oh, by the way, that's a vernal pool in the corner of your lot. And now all of a sudden, you're subject to a lot of bylaws that you weren't ever applicable to you before, and it could just be, you know, a new, your soil settled in that corner. you know, a new, your soil settled in that corner of your lot and a spring popped up and what used to be subserv- subterranean is now coming up to the surface. And, you know, all of a sudden you've got a wetland that, um, you're now subject to wetland bylaws that there's no map that says, here's all the wetlands in town and anything, you know, that was in existence as of this date is now grandfathered from any new ordinance. You, you don't know. You're, you're, it's kind of a crapshoot.
Is agriculture exempt?
Yes, it is.
Until, until you sell your lot, which I don't think that point is understood by a lot of people. Agriculture is exempt until anybody that owns agricultural land decides to sell it. And if the seller decides to flip it from agriculture to residential, now all these new bylaws will be in fact in the residential and not exempt if you're following what I'm saying. And if you have your lands in, in chapter land and you sell it and it becomes a builder decides they're gonna build on your chapter land and they pay the back taxes, now this law will in fact, this bylaw, excuse me, will in fact, um, be a, a bylaw in which the new owner would have to follow.
Yes. But wouldn't that be true of any of the bylaws?
Well, I guess it would be and, um, but, you know, when you're, yeah, I'm just thinking of large properties in town. I mean, there's probably a good, um, many of the agriculturals that may have could have a vernal pool, could have an intermittent stream that, you know, during one time of year or whatnot that may not have it when a- another time of year. It's just, I don't, I don't know, it's, I've been going to a lot of meetings and I've learned a lot about it, but I'm still not sold on it.
I personally, I kind of wish they had broken it into several articles because it's, you, it's either all or nothing. And while I think that some of the things are good, but as a whole, it's a lot harder to swallow.
Well, anyone can stand up a town meeting and delete sections.
I, I think, right, it can make motions. The one thing that is also a little bit, um, I find unsettling is that once it goes into effect, then there, um, and Chris can speak to this, cause I don't quite understand this. They then have to write up some, I can't think of the, the proper word that it is that, that goes with it. And those go to the select board and then the select board votes on, on that particular part. Um, I just can't remember the, it's not, what is it called, Chris?
Is it like policies and procedures?
No, it has, it has something.
I know what you're talking about. I can't think of it.
Yeah, I can't think of the name of it. Once this, once this bylaw passes, then the current, the current, uh, uh, Conservation Commission makes, you know, X, Y, and Z that goes along with the, uh, bylaws and then those go to the select board. And then the select board decides, you know, yes, those are, are okay and, and yes, they're not okay. And I, I, there's more to be said about that, but I, I don't really understand it, but I, and I can't remember the name of the word that they use that they're gonna be writing.
Essentially, they're, they're following the federal process and they'd be writing regulations.
Regulations, thank you, that's the word.
Yeah, so typically, at, at, at the federal level, Congress passes a law and says, you know, we're gonna direct the, the Health and Human Services, Department of Health and Human Services to, you know, hand out ten billion dollars and we're gonna direct them to write the regulations for how this is gonna be done. And then, then they go off and the Health and Human Services writes the regulations. They publish them for ninety days and then they go into effect. So when it actually comes time to enforce the law, it's the regulations that get enforced. So those, they, they're writing the regulations and nobody in Congress ever voted on the regulations. But that's what's actually being enforced by the, by that Department of Health and Human Services. And that would be the same here. The Conservation Commission would go off and write the regulations. They'd submit them apparently to the Board of Selectmen to approve or disapprove. And then, once they're approved, they enforce them. But it doesn't go to town meetings for the, the town population to vote on them.
Right. And I don't quite understand what the regulations would even be. So, you know, that's another question I have. And they can't write the regulations because that would be kind of putting the, the horse before the cart. If they don't have the bylaw, they don't need to write the regulations, as I understand it.
Well, like Jim was saying, I, I think that, you know, you give money to the Depa- Health Department and say, uh, this is for, uh, low and moderate income folks. And then they write up restrictions or regulations as to how it will be dispersed. So you're right, sometimes the regulations are as important, if not more important than the actual enabling. Well, I don't know, folks, I've kept you long enough, I guess. Um, it's kind of good to air some of this stuff. I'm sorry that, what are you, what are you cheering for?
We're gonna go, we're gonna close the meeting, I hope.
Well, maybe we just won't. No, but I think it, it's well to know where everybody's head is. And I feel bad that Louise didn't get a chance to hear most of our discussion, you know, because, um, she is on the Conservation Commission. Danny, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, let's continue this on next Tuesday. I'm literally close to, what are we, May twelfth? ZVA meeting.
Seconded.
Okay, so we have a motion, uh, by Denny and, uh, seconded by Jim to, um, close the meeting. I'll go around for roll call. Jim?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Ginny?
Aye.
Susanna?
Aye.
And I'm an aye.